We have a full agenda today, but I want to, I want to talk about a couple of things. After our formal agenda, we have two briefing slash presentations. And then I have a request to go into executive session to review a number of legal issues and opinions, and so I'll call for that. I know we have public safety today, correct?
Special briefing.
Or no, just special briefing. Okay, so we don't have public safety. We have economic development, but that's not till 12:30, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we will try to move us along so that that meeting can start on time. All right? Okay, so we'll get started. So first on the agenda, we don't have anything, any presentations to start us off today, so we'll get right at it. The first item is a resolution approving a request for me to travel to DC in January, and this is for two things. One is the US Conference of Mayors and the Mayor's Innovation Project, which are back-to-back. So one of them is two days, and then two days right after that. So move.
Support.
All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution scheduling a special meeting of the City Commission to affirm the oath of office for the recently elected city officials and library commissioners. So move.
Support.
All right, and is Kurt here? He's been attending these, but I don't see him. So we'll swear in our colleagues, Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner Jones, and newly-elected Kurt Repard and library commissioners, and we'll say goodbye to Commissioner Schaefer. So that is going to be at 6:00 PM before our 7:00 PM meeting. All right, any questions, comments? All right, and then I think there's a party afterwards, that long road maybe?
Sure.
[laughter]
Depends on letting you keep us here.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution scheduling special briefings of the City Commission in January, February, and March.
Support.
All right, so commissioners, this we've talked about, wanting to do work sessions or briefings, so we have them scheduled in January, February, and March for two hours. I know that several of you have already provided topics that you would like covered, so the city manager and our deputy city manager that were working on those agendas. Again, just to clarify, those meetings are for updates from city departments and briefings. They're not intended for us to cast votes or make decisions, but it really is an opportunity for us to, to learn and stay updated on issues and then ask questions. So if you have additional topics you want on those agendas, please get those to Eric DeLong. And then, just so you know, we're starting with the first three months, knowing that come April, we usually get into budget sessions in April and May where we meet weekly. And so until we have the budget schedule finalized, we're just gonna move forward with these three. Okay? Any questions?
Just one comment. I think that it's important, what you said, that those are items for discussions, not voting, because I do believe there has been some confusion in the community about some of the topics we've covered and whether, whether and when we are going to vote.
Yeah.
So how we can address that, I'm not sure, but we should consider that.
Yeah. Maybe we can do better, a better job communicating that on our end proactively so that it is more clear.
Okay.
Yeah, so duly noted, though. All right, anything else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution amending the City Commission's standing rules.
So moved.
Support? All right, so Jessica Wood from our Law Department is here to tell us about this, and I think some of us have some questions, so go ahead.
Right, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So you have, for you, I think you've got the redlined version in your packet, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And these are suggestions that came from the Clerk's Office. Every so often, these rules get reviewed just to be updated and to reflect actual practices and to promote efficiencies and so forth. And so that was really the goal of this resolution, it was just to update these. So we took a stab at it, and that's what the redlined version you have in front of you reflects. So I don't know if you got a chance to go over those changes, or if you want me to do that.
I think we've all had a chance to read them. I think we've all had a chance to read them. Commissioners, questions? Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, and I'm looking for it now. Yes, and I'm looking for it now. My, my redlined version took a while to load, but I did have a question about the comment My, my redlined version took a while to load, but I did have a question about the comment period during public comment and the fact, I'm trying to find where that is, Jessica. period during public comment and the fact, I'm trying to find where that is, Jessica.
I can help you, actually, because I think I know what you're talking about. I can help you, actually, because I think I know what you're talking about.
Okay. Okay.
I think under rule number 12. I think under rule number 12.
Rule 12, okay, here we go. Rule 12, okay, here we go.
A sentence was added. A sentence was added.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay. And the sentence provides, I'll get to it myself. And the sentence provides, I'll get to it myself.
Number nine, requesting or expecting comment from the City Commission. Number nine, requesting or expecting comment from the City Commission.
Yep, and that was added as an item that would be disorderly conduct at meetings. Yep, and that was added as an item that would be disorderly conduct at meetings. Now, just so you understand the intent of that. Now, just so you understand the intent of that.
I read this. I read this.
The intent was simply meant to clarify that public comments given during that The intent was simply meant to clarify that public comments given during that public comment section are not intended to engender debate or dialogue right at that public comment section are not intended to engender debate or dialogue right at that time. time. So in other words, they have three minutes to present to you, and that isn't the, the So in other words, they have three minutes to present to you, and that isn't the, the time for you to begin a discussion. time for you to begin a discussion. That's really just sort of a housekeeping matter for efficiency. That's really just sort of a housekeeping matter for efficiency. Certainly, that wasn't meant to suggest that the City Commission doesn't have the duty Certainly, that wasn't meant to suggest that the City Commission doesn't have the duty to respond to citizens on items. to respond to citizens on items. So if you want to change that somehow, we actually have some other language that we So if you want to change that somehow, we actually have some other language that we can, we can take that out, if that's the preference, and maybe add a note later on in the rules that says, please note that City Commission does not respond to comments or answer questions or engage in debate during the public comment section, or somehow clarify that.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, I do, too. I just, I don't want to send the wrong message. There's no intent, as you said, to do that. We, we are responsive, it's just, yeah, we can't debate. Often, we don't even have the facts, all the facts in front of us in, in situations like that, but we certainly want to encourage public comment, so.
Right.
Perhaps we can do that, you know, I was glad it came to my attention from a constituency, and just to make sure that there are others out there that, that had the wrong impression.
Right, yeah, and, and really, it was never intended to do that, or to limit what they're allowed to comment about in any way.
Exactly.
Certainly, just really to try to keep some order to the meetings, as you know, and, and keep them moving along, so.
Right, and we've had questions about how to engage in this, this is another attempt to clarify that.
Yep, so just sort of a procedural thing, but definitely needed some clarification. So what we could do, again, is remove that from rule 12, and then add some clarifying language to rule 11, to, to the effect that, and actually, if you don't mind, I, I brought some.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yeah, so I'm at section two, rule number one, under Order of Business. I think this, this may be the first page. I know that we've had a number of concerns brought about when we vote on the minutes from the previous meeting, so it's right now under five, but it was B. And I'm wondering, because it comes before the opportunity to provide public comment.
Thank you.
And my experience has been that, that the public can weigh in on the minutes, and that the minutes are a part of the agenda, and this doesn't give them the opportunity to do that before the, the vote itself takes place. So I understand the concern that's been brought forth, but, so I'm wondering if there is a way to change when that, so it would just be changing those two for, um, five and six?
Five and six.
Yeah, so that they can weigh in prior to us making a vote, because part of it is, is if they're, if they're suggesting something is wrong in the minutes.
Right.
There's no room to make the edit at that, on that, at that time.
Right.
If we've already approved them.
Right, that certainly makes sense. And again, that's not so much a legal issue as it is whatever your preference is, so.
So colleagues, any?
Yeah, so let's talk about both of those. Colleagues, are you comfortable making that change? I, I think Commissioner Lanier makes a really good point, and we have heard that from the community. So switching public comment on agenda to go before approval of the minutes. And then the second one would be shifting the language around expectations of comment from this body and taking it out of the section on disorderly conduct, because I think that's the, the struggle we're having, is that it's categorized under disorderly conduct. So just moving it to another location, are we all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner?
I actually just have a comment, not a suggested change. It was good to reread these again, so I'm glad it was brought forward. And I just would like to offer, I have zero problem with people lining up out the door and down the street to make public comment, that's what this body's for, and certainly people come with their passions and their concerns and all those kind of things. At the same time, I would point out, I'd rule 12A7 where it says making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks. I think we've allowed some of that to go on. Impertinent's kind of an interesting word.
Yeah, I know, I, I thought the same thing when I read it.
It's a holdover.
It's, it's really broad. We might think about striking that, it's not showing proper respect, rude, that's a matter of, you know, point of view. But certainly, threatening or abusive language, or engaging in threatening or abusive language or conduct, so, and there's specific ways we're supposed to respond to that. You're supposed to gavel them, call them out of order, if it continues, they would actually potentially be, and I'm not saying it's ever gotten to that point, but I think, again, I'll take all the criticism we have coming to us, that's, that's what this is about, but I do think we've let it go a little bit too, too far in certain instances, so.
Commissioner, I appreciate that feedback. I know it's, being the chair, it is a struggle sometimes to know when you draw the line, and so I, I take that feedback to heart, so, thank you. And, and if you have a better word for impertinent, we are glad to hear your thoughts.
I mean, you could just get rid of it. That, that was in there before, so that doesn't reflect a change. I think the gist of it is, please try to make your comments relevant.
That's a nice.
We, we know that that's not always the case, right? So it's up to you.
Yeah.
I say strike, yeah, I would be in favor of striking.
Yeah, I say we strike it. And, and we all know that we do often get comments that we have no, you know, they, where people don't recognize that we don't have authority over that, whether it's a county issue, or a statewide issue, or a federal issue, but I still think having an opportunity to be heard is important, so. Commissioner?
Yeah, just one question around this. This doesn't change ultimately how our, our body committee structure works, or ordinances are adopted, or how we work on resolutions? I didn't see any changes really substantial to those sections in relation to how we work, is that right?
Not at all.
Okay.
This is just you establishing your own rules of procedure.
Gotcha, okay.
Yep.
Right, and I do appreciate the work, because to provide that clarity is important, but I wanted to just check to see how our body works, just to make sure of that. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Just to say thank you for working on this, Jessica, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So commissioners, can I get a motion, a formal motion to make those three amendments that we discussed, so that this can be revised and brought back to us tonight? So move.
Support.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next that will take us to a, let's see, where are we here? Resolution electing the appointed officials in approving employment agreements for the same. So move.
Support.
All right, so commissioners, it's that time of year where we've had an opportunity to do our annual review with our appointed officials and discuss contracts. So before us, today, we have a contract extension for our city manager that will go through February as he prepares to retire. And then we have three resolutions moving forward with a one-year continuation, or one-year contract for our three other appointed officials, and that would be John Glodinsky, Anita Hitchcock, and Darlene O'Neal.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. So, so colleagues, just as a, just as an update, and I, I know I emailed all of you, but I did work with John Gretzinger to update the contract language, there were some minor changes in those. Those were shared with all of the appointed officials, they reviewed them, they gave me feedback, approved the language, so I'll be printing those off today, signing them, getting them to our appointed officials to review again and to sign, and then those will be processed. Great, all right. All right, next that, let's see, where does that take us? Resolution, next is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Grand Rapids Pickleball Club.
So moved.
Support. All right, our Parks Director is here to tell us about this.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, David Mark, Director of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation. This is a resolution accepting a gift of $25,000 for a new shade shelter and structure out at Belknap Park for the pickleball organization and others that play up at that court. If you're not aware, pickleball is a wildly growing and popular sport in many cities across the country. Grand Rapids is one of those cities in which this is really kind of catching fire. It's a great, great sport to play, a little bit in between, across between tennis and table tennis, if you will. It's like how, how I like to describe it, but a great sport with the aging population as well. This is a group that has made improvements to this park in the past, they play up here regularly, not exclusively, and this is their desire to build this amenity for the benefit of their players and for other people that play at this park as well. Grand Rapids, City of Grand Rapids will be contributing $2,000 toward the construction management services of this project, the remaining $25,000 is a gift from the Pickleball Club.
All right, commissioners?
Well, just want to point out how grateful we are to the Pickleball Club, and certainly did a great job of leveraging gene funds in this case, so this is exciting, and it's another thing to keep people moving and exercising, and another option in the city. Thanks for your work on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is a big deal. Wait for it, wait for it, wait for it.
Still waiting.
Pickle, deal, that's it.
Oh, my goodness. I was not prepared for that.
Me either. On national TV.
I'm gonna have to save that clip. All right, any other puns or comments? All right, commissioners, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Next one.
It carries. So maybe we should do a team building pickleball tournament?
Yeah.
Commissioners? Yeah, maybe that's what we should do. Commissioner Kelly, I'll let you organize that.
Okay.
All right, so David can stay up here, because our next resolution is authorizing an agreement with Strive. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right.
Great.
David, you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely. So Spectrum Health, a strong partner of ours here in the City of Grand Rapids, has developed a new primary care facility in downtown Grand Rapids. The clinic, the, the facility is called Strive. It is really, for lack of a better term, a convenience-based place where people that work downtown, live downtown, can come and take care of some of their primary care needs in close proximity to where they live and work. Strive has reached out to a number of partner organizations like ours at Parks and Recreation. Other examples include Downtown Grand Rapids Incorporated. And Strive is essentially using organizations like Parks and Recreation and Downtown Grand Rapids Incorporated as partners who simply provide services that would be of benefit to Spectrum Health members at this, at this location. And so Strive has, as a part of this agreement, agreed to advertise at no cost to the city those programs and offerings that we have at the Recreation Department, as well as other opportunities that occur in downtown Grand Rapids. So for example, some of the three free events and exercise things that Downtown Grand Rapids puts on in the downtown core, those are all advertised through Strive as benefits to their members. So I've got George here from Strive and Spectrum Health to answer any additional questions that you might have, but I think this is an extraordinary opportunity for us, and really helps us to leverage that marketing and promotion opportunity that we've talked so much about.
Great. All right, Commissioner?
Just a quick question, so David, are they also advertising those that are in the neighborhood parks, or not necessarily?
Anything that we have to offer in the city, yes.
In the city, citywide, okay.
Yep, exactly.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I'd like to just thank you for doing this, this is just amazing. We're start, you know, we're really trying to be a healthy community, or, I'm not gonna bring it up again, an age-friendly community, because we're going to have so many more seniors on board, so I hope that there will be opportunities to encourage them to come downtown and, and get moving, because clearly, they would be much healthier if they do so. So thank you for this, this is really exciting.
All right, questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next that will take us to a resolution authorizing our 20, a 2018 Laugh Fest sponsorship.
So moved.
Support. All right, Mr. Josh Niermore, you want to tell us about this?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So as you're aware, Laugh Fest has been around in the community since 2011, and they offer free and ticketed events to help support Gilda's Club, which offers grievance services to a number of members in the community. So at the November meeting, the Mobile GR Commission is recommending to you to approve a continued sponsorship. We sponsored, sponsored them for the first time last year, this would be the second year, in an amount of $15,000, and then waiving of hooded meter fees. And the majority of the $15,000 this year is gonna go to helping support some dash services to get more of the volunteers to be able to park in some of the lower costs, because they rely very heavily on volunteers, so we're helping them to kind of lower the costs for the volunteers that participate this year.
Nice. All right, questions or comments, commissioners? It's a great event for a good cause, provides some energy downtown, and usually, it's pretty cold out. March is still, you know, cold, so it's nice to have so many people downtown.
Yes, yeah.
All right, with that, I'll call a question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carries. All right, next that will be item number nine, this is a resolution approving the project plan and the issuance of bonds for the Economic Development Corporation of the City of Grand Rapids, Beacon Hill at East Gate Phase Three project.
So moved.
Support. All right, Kara, you want to tell us about this?
So we held a public hearing on December 4th. In addition, after that public hearing, a second informational letter was sent to households immediately surrounding Beacon Hill to provide residents with additional information clarifying the use of the $1.25 million allocated for additional capital improvements. That expense includes the $600,000 for a pedestrian bridge, $250,000 of financing costs, $150,000 for renovation of the old health center, and $250,000 of other capital expenditures on the campus, such as fleet vehicles, equipment, painting, driveway maintenance, et cetera. As a result of this project, 147 full-time equivalent employees are being retained, and I want to thank Christian and Eric for all their work on this project to bring it forward. So I think we reached a point at which we've fully answered all of the public questions we have outstanding on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Kara. I am gonna turn to my third ward colleagues to see if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, I'd like to also thank Eric and Christian and Kara for their work on this, and I'd also like to thank Jeff for bearing with us and coming back multiple times to address the public and to address the commission and be there to answer any questions should they arise. I know that we had a couple hiccups with this, and I think that the concerns that we had been hearing from the public were addressed by sending a follow-up communication after the public hearing. So you may recall that there were elements with the bonds that we were, we had not, within the city, had published that information, and so there, it left some confusion for members of the community. And so what we did after that meeting was to just follow up, to make sure people were aware of fully what we were trying to accomplish with this vote. And I heard from neighbors in East Gate sharing that they're excited about the fact that the pedestrian bridge is being built, because they recognize, and that was probably one of the areas of the, of the project that was a concern, but they're excited because of the service that it will provide from one structure to the next, and how beneficial that'll be, especially in Michigan winters, and on top of that, at a senior facility. So thank you, Jeff, for being a great neighbor in East Gate, and we're looking forward to hearing more from Beacon Hill, any future projects and all of the work that you guys are working on to, to kind of expand your campus there. And thank you to staff for your patience and hard work in making sure that we got to this point. Really happy to support this today.
Good. Thank you, and Commissioner, thank you. I know you were actively engaged in this, and, and I'm glad we were able to get to a point where all of the questions were answered and concerns addressed, so. Commissioner Allen, anything to add?
No.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, I will call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. And I'll also add my thanks to Beacon Hill for being the host for the safe pitch night last week.
Yes.
So it was a great setting, I love that room, I'm sure we'll be asking to use it more in the future.
We just did, yeah, we just did for the commission night out. I think it's, I think it came back saying that it wasn't, I don't know if it wasn't large enough, the seating, what's the capacity, Jeff, like 150 auditorium?
Almost 200.
Almost 200. So do some, yeah, because it's dynamic, it's dynamic in there.
It's a great space, so thank you, I really appreciate it. Yeah, that was really nice. Okay, so that will take us to item number 10. This is a resolution setting a public hearing to establish the City of Grand Rapids, South Division, Burton Hall, Granville Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority, to propose the boundaries of a CID, a corridor improvement district, and to designate the CID as a qualified development area. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, I think we're all excited to see this come forward, let's hear about it.
All right, good morning, commissioners. So yeah, what you have before you is just a resolution to set a public hearing for January 9th of 2018, so those three things that you had just mentioned, so it's to set up the actual authority of the South Division, Burton Hall, Granville Avenue Corridor Improvement District, establish the actual boundaries of the proposed district, and then also to designate it as a qualified development area. So some of you may be aware and have heard that we were, been working, city staff has been working with the Steering Committee made up of community stakeholders to kind of explore the creation of a corridor improvement district. And so over this past year, there've been community meetings that have been looking at kind of what the overall vision of the area would be, what the CID could actually help. And it's been heavily informed by the area-specific plans that were developed by the Granville area and the ongoing area-specific plan for the corridor improvement district. And the good thing is that a lot of the members of the Steering Committee have either been a part of the Granville area-specific plan or are currently part of the conversations going on about this division corridor area-specific plan as well. So this, if we attach to this packet, you'll see at the end the actual feasibility study that kind of goes into the details of the financial feasibility of a potential corridor improvement district. Now, this was presented to the Economic Development Project Team on November 14th, and it came out with a recommendation to bring this forward to the full commission to actually set the public hearing for this. It's also important to know, along with, in accordance with City Commission policy, it's important also to notice that this is, the recommendation is to not just have this as a regular development area, but a qualified development area. Specifically, the, the difference mainly being that it contains a transit-oriented development, which is defined as infrastructure improvements located within a half-mile of a transit-oriented facility that promotes transit ridership, and this is specifically speaking to our, to the bus rapid transit or silver line along the division corridor. And so the important thing with that is that there are certain taxing jurisdictions that wouldn't be able to opt out of that capture, so specifically the ITP, GRCC, and then also the county.[1723.87] So specifically, the ITP, GRCC, and then also the county. And you will see at the end of the overall packet, the feasibility study, a kind of a visual map of not just the proposed projections of capture for the proposed corridor improvement district, but then also just a quick map of the proposed boundaries. So that would be on Granville, south of Wealthy, yeah, Granville, south of Wealthy, Division, south of Hall, and then connected by Hall and Burton.
All right, Commissioner?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to just say a thanks, I think, not only to this body. I know, Mayor, this has been an area that you've talked about for a while too, about wanting to help and helping work through it. And this body as a whole put some more staff time into the ASP, also thinking that there's a CID and I'm looking at Kara's group, you know, Suzanne. There was a lot of city staff that kind of helped underpin here because, you know, different from other areas, I think we needed to help, you know, figure out how to get that jump-started. So I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and others in the city, you know, to basically see this through because that's, that's really what we wanted in the end. And I think, you know, knowing what each neighborhood needs and how to help them get there, I think this is a really good plan and takes a lot of that ASP, which was a really involved community process. And then also put some financing tools beyond it to help fund those things long-term. So it just seems to fit a lot of the vision that we've talked about.
Yeah. Well said, Commissioner. Thank you. All right, other comments?
Tom, how are you keeping all of these feasibility studies separate in your head? I'm impressed, actually. So, when I look at the, the map on the last page of the attachment, so it covers some of the South Town CID's territory. So, we, in our ASP process, opted not to include the Division, Wealthy kind of area because it's going to be included here with this plan, which makes more sense because it'll be a division corridor. So I just wanted to kind of make that distinction for the commission that some of this is beyond the, the ASP work will be beyond the CID boundary for that purpose.
Right.
That's a, that's a great clarification. Both important.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your work on this. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving the adjusted city water and sewer rates in accordance with the 2017 Water and Sewer Rate Review.
So moved.
Support. All right. Hello.
Morning.
Good morning.
Well, we do this in two resolutions. So the first one's for the city-specific water and sewer rates. For the water utility, we're projecting a 2.45% increase, which is an increase of $1 million, approximately $1 million for the revenue requirement. And then for the sewage disposal system, it's going to be a 3.08% increase, which is about $1.5 billion increase to the revenue requirement. Attached to the resolution is also the public comments we received since introduction on November 14th, and as well as, I also included this year, the UAB comments, which I thought might answer some of your questions you might have had. And then furthermore, when we presented this in November, we discussed the change to the integrated connection fees. So I'll be back in March to pass a resolution for the methodology behind that. So, aren't there any questions?
All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. City Manager? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recognize Molly for doing an exceptionally good job in preparing this. It's one of the more difficult tasks we have for all employees to accomplish, and she did a great job. I'd also like to recognize both the water and the water resource recovery facility for an incredible job of holding down prices. When one thinks about other inflationary costs, like even our own health insurance, which is rising at double digits, to hold costs down to 3% or less is, I think, a sign of very good work.
Well, I will add my thanks. I've actually run into Molly in the elevator on rate review days. She, with all the, the work that goes into this, you always have a smile on your face. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
For your work. All right. Did I already call a question? No, I didn't. So I'll call a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, Molly can stay up there because the next one is a resolution approving water and sewer rates in accordance with the 2017 Water Sewer Rate Review for the retail and wholesale partner communities of the city's water supply system and sanitary sewer system.
So moved.
Support. All right.
So, this resolution is specific to our retail and wholesale partner communities. It's, you know, same story as the previous resolution. I would say this, this group of customer, or our partner communities all have the opportunity to participate in a 30-day comment period. In the past, we've had meetings with them individually this year. Nobody took us up on actually having a sit-down meeting. Most of our communication was through email, but, you know, we presented this on November 16th to the Utility Advisory Board, and they, they support the rate changes.
Great. Thank you. All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you again. All right, Commissioners, the next three are related to our discussions around housing. And so the city manager asked me to give him a moment to tee these up before I read them and get them on the floor before us. So I'll turn to the city manager and then I'll, I'll get the item number 13 before us. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you say tea or tease?
Tea.
Tea.
Tea, sorry.
Good.
No teasing.
Yes, thank you. The next three agenda items, all are recommendations that flowed from the Housing Advisory Committee, following the calendar that has been distributed to you as well as posted on the city's webpage. It was scheduled to introduce these three recommendations to you this morning. Staff did the favor of also including a resolution for each of these so that should, in your discussion, you wish to actually move these forward by passing a resolution, that is available to you. But that's not necessarily what staff was asking you. We're asking you to have this be introduced, to have a discussion. You may wish to table this, to discuss it further. And in fact, if you look on the calendar that has been provided to you, these three items would be scheduled to come back to you on January 9th to finalize, if you wish. Finally, you may also wish to set a public hearing for any one of these items. And if you do that, then I'll just readjust my schedule accordingly.
All right. Any questions about that or process? Okay, thank you. So, let's get the first one up to discuss. This is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on an ordinance to amend taxation of assisted lower-income housing. And this is the first recommendation out of the Housing Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Support. All right. Jessica Wood, you want to tell us about this?
Sure. Hello again. I believe that you're all familiar with this issue because it's been discussed for a while as part of the whole Housing Advisory Committee and the Housing Now presentation. So this, actually, this was number one of all the recommendations that were discussed. And what this would involve is amending your pilot ordinance. And I don't know how familiar you are with your current pilot ordinance, but the pilot ordinance comes into play when low-income housing is involved. And how it works is that in lieu of paying an ad valorem rate for taxes, the developer is, if they qualify, given the option of paying a payment in lieu of tax or a service charge. Now, generally speaking, that service charge is 4%. And it has to do with sort of a complex calculation that the city assessor does, but at the end of the day, the, the service charge is multiplied against 4%. This would amend that in order to give the developer the option of either paying the 4% pilot or choosing to pay a 1% pilot and then paying the equivalent of the 2% service charge into the housing, the Affordable Housing Fund. So, I just said a lot, so I just want to make sure that makes sense.
Say that last sentence again, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So, right now, typically they're going to pay 4% instead of the ad valorem rate, which is a nice discount for the developer. The way this is amended, the developer would have the option of either paying the 4%, as is standard now, or paying a 1% pilot and then paying the equivalent of 2% service charge or pilot into the Affordable Housing Fund. Okay? So the money would go into two separate pots.
And it's 3% total?
Right, so it's 3%. So it's still, they're getting a discount overall.
Okay.
And they're essentially dividing the money into two different pots. So, the idea being, this would be a way to fund the Affordable Housing Fund and to give developers an option if they, you know, they can choose either one. Now, a few people have asked, how would this be enforceable? And the answer is yes. Once they make their decision to either do the 4% or the 1 plus 2, it would be enforceable either way. It would be an annual payment in either case, and it would be enforceable pursuant to an agreement, so.
Okay.
So what will help, what will help a developer choose this 3% option over the 4%?
Well, we're assuming that getting a percent reduction is helpful, for one thing. So going from 4% to 3% is a reduction for, for them. And then beyond that, I think it's just how their numbers play out. Maybe some of the developers on that commission can speak to that better than I can, so.
Actually...
And Commissioner Allen wants to weigh in here, and then I'll have the city manager jump in.
Go ahead and finish this. Yeah. I think the notion of developers expressed a desire to help address affordable housing in this city by contributing to this fund so that they have the option, business as usual, for your light-type projects, or you can help this fund and save yourself some money at the same time.
Okay. Let's go with Commissioner Allen and then Commissioner O'Connor.
Do you have a question to what Greg said, John? You're welcome.
Well, I was going to try to explain a little bit more about the rationale, but if you...
Go ahead, because mine's a little bit different, so.
So, when...
I don't want to disrupt the flow of the conversation.
The payment in low tax, when you submit your application for a tax credit or your proforma, that 4% is a cost that is associated with the development. It has to be factored into the decision-making. So by essentially reducing it by 1%, it gives your application, it makes your application appear better because you're paying less out. The ability for the city to continue to collect 1% and 2% be set aside for the Housing Affordability Fund is, again, to Greg's point, a way for them to contribute to the fund. It's also a way for us to essentially leverage affordable housing dollars to create even, to have even more affordable housing dollars. And again, it's up to the developer's choice if they want to pay the 4% and make that part of their application, they can. But this was a recommendation from some of our folks who have been very successful at accessing the low-income housing tax credit dollars as a way to, to make their projects qualify even better.
Good. Thank you.
Without, without having a significant loss to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner?
So I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into the works, but I'm gonna anyways. That's how, that's how I roll.
Thanks for qualifying that.
So, I think we might be missing an opportunity here, and I'd like to offer up a subtle change. And I'll qualify my suggestion that it might not be legally possible, so I'll let you come back and tell me whether it is or not.
Thank you. Why, we appreciate our city attorneys.
But according, according to our city ordinance, and a project which is qual, for a project to qualify for a pilot has to meet three criteria, and the three criteria are listed in the opening part of the ordinance. They're federally, federally aided, state development authority, or financed with a grant from such authority. They serve low-income families, elderly or handicapped, and are owned by consumer housing cooperatives, qualified nonprofit housing corporations, et cetera, et cetera. I've been talking with some rental property owners, and I think, I have one in particular that I think of that owns, I don't know, about 30 different housing units between single-family, multifamily. And this person, his business model, and not, this isn't going to fit everybody, but I think it, his model is he intentionally charges less rent than what the market would bear. So, if the market has a three-bedroom house and they're charging $1,500 a month, he charges $1,000 a month. And I asked him, why would you do that? And he said, well, you got to factor in the cost of turning your properties over. I have a waiting list for my properties. And he says, I have some people that have rented my properties for 15 years. I have kids of, kids of parents on my waiting list because their mom rented for me for 15 years and they want their kid to. He says, so you got to factor in the cost of turning a property over. It's empty for a month, two months, you got to paint it, you got to go through this. He said, if I can keep somebody in long-term, it saves me money, and it saves me money on the housing inspections because I've got a solid renter that's taking care of it. So I wonder if we could, if we could add, change those three qualifications and offer a pilot to any property owner if they're going to assure that they're going to give low-income housing. And I've done the math on it. So if you have a three-bedroom house and you're charging $1,500 a month, you're going to pay about $2,500 a year in taxes. You're going to factor in about a 15% fee annually for turnover. So your net income's going to be about $12,800, whereas if I voluntarily charge $1,000 a month and I only pay 3%, then my, my payment is only going to be $540 a month. I'm not going to factor in that turnover because I'm keeping people long-term. So my net-net is almost, it's less than $1,000 a year, but I get to keep the person in there longer term. So, I just would like to offer, maybe if we could offer anybody this opportunity as a pilot in this scenario, if they voluntarily do affordable housing. And I know it might be a nightmare to monitor that, but I just want to put that out there.
And actually, so my first thoughts are that the language in the ordinance actually closely mirrors the language in the statute itself. I'm sure you've looked at the Mishna statute itself. So my only concern is I would want to go look at the Mishna statute itself to see, because I know that within the statute, they have to meet certain requirements in order to even qualify for the ordinance that we generate. So I, you know...
I wasn't asking for an answer right now.
Right, no, no, no.
And this could be a separate issue, but I just wanted to put it on the table as something that's been brought up to me as I talk to rental property owners, and it's just at least something for us to consider.
Right. So, since the resolution before us is to schedule a public hearing...
Yeah, I'm all for it, yeah.
Maybe Jessica, you could look into that and see if that's legal under state law?
Yes, and I believe that you could still introduce this ordinance as is if you choose to schedule the public hearing. And then as long as the changes are not too significant, we could, you could go ahead and, and consider them for adoption at January 9th.
Okay. Commissioner?
I think it's very important to talk to community development about this too because the administrative, it could be a real administrative nightmare for the city to track all that. I mean, there's so many people in the city.
Of this or what Davis...
No, what Davis suggested, yeah. So we just need some questions answered around that.
Definitely. And Commissioner Kelly, just so you know, I'm working closely with Connie Bohaj on this. Yeah.
I would assume you would be. And then one other thing I just wanted to say about this is that I know that we had a couple developers, at least, talk to me about, go ahead and start a, charge a developer's fee, which I thought was, you know, a pretty generous offer, but that's not allowable by law because of Bolt versus Lansing. So, this is another option to consider. And yes, well, we need a public hearing on all these, so. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
All right. Good. City Manager?
Not follow my own advice and try not to snatch victory away here, but this is a real win-win for everybody, I think, because developers can reduce their tax liability for these types of projects by 25%. And the city can increase the money that we put toward affordable housing by three times compared to what we might by only collecting the 4% pilot. So it's a significant gain for the city as well, for the Affordable Housing Fund specifically. And so I highly recommend you give consideration to this. Commissioner Allen's suggestion, I think, can, can walk separately from this action here.
Most definitely. I want to clarify that most definitely. That could be an amendment later to this or whatever.
No, that's, that's good. We need to think creatively. So thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
So, the memo doesn't indicate the date of the public hearing?
What?
Am I in the wrong spot?
The resolution does.
Yeah, the resolution.
Okay.
So the public hearing will be then, on January 9th, right? Public hearing to obtain comment on the proposal shall be held on January 9th.
January 9th would be...
Yeah, January 9th.
Okay.
The public hearing. I'm sorry, did I misspeak?
Because, because it's an ordinance, it needs...
Right. It's so far out. I was thinking that would be the date of adoption, Commissioner.
Okay, that's where I was thinking.[1656.83]
You're right. It's a little unusual to have a public hearing set that far out. But yeah, that's just the public hearing, and then you're free to actually consider it for actual adoption at any time after that.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, technically, we could who the public hearing and then still consider it that same evening if we want to. That's, that's allowed, correct?
It is. You guys rarely do that, but yeah.
We rarely do it. If we wanted to, we could, or it could be on the next agenda.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah. All right, any other questions about that? All right. So next, that'll take us to item number 14. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, did I not call a vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries.
You did.
I did.
Yeah, because I jumped in right after.
Afterwards. So, that's fine. Well, we just, double yes. We're excited about that.
We're sure.
We're absolutely sure. Okay, so that will take us to item number 14, and this is a resolution approving a new city commission policy entitled Property Acquisition and Management, and this is recommendation number seven out of our Housing Advisory Committee. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right. So Jessica, you wanna tell us about this one?
Sure. So this one is sort of cut from whole cloth. This is, I recognize that it's, it's written in sort of a vague manner, but it's just to get the ball rolling. Here's the gist of it. You're all aware of all of the laws in our state that provide restrictions in terms of what you can do in terms of affordable housing. There are some ways to address that, though, and one of them is for the city itself to acquire property and then retain management and control to some degree over those properties. So, this policy essentially is saying, "Let's use a market-based approach and exercise our authority under the Home Rule Cities Act to acquire property, interest in property, in order to increase the availability of housing in the city." It just, it's, it's a new approach. I don't think you're currently in the habit of acquiring properties for this purpose, but it's something that would certainly help with some of the restrictive laws in the state of Michigan. So, again, it's just a policy for your consideration and, and your, your feedback.
So, Jessica, hypothetically, under this one, we could acquire property, identify a development partner, do a long-term lease on that property with the developer, doing a development with a commitment to maintain affordable housing units.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going out unearlier, but yes.
What would this enable us to do? Like, what is the outcome that we're trying to accomplish?
That is the, that's correct. And I know you're all aware, because of legal opinions we've provided, of the concerns you have to address, but yes, that is the idea here, yes, is that if you have a hand in it, you have a lot more freedom to, to manage these types of things, like the rent, that you don't have when you're dealing with a private developer. It's different from forcing a private developer to do something because it's yours.
So Mayor, if I might just back us up a half a step, because the last that the Housing Advisory Committee made this recommendation, slightly different than what is being presented to you this morning. The discussion at the Housing Advisory Committee was largely, "Require any housing project to designate some portion of it as affordable." Well, that's against the law. We cannot do that. So we tried to think of a way that we could incent affordable housing in projects that really aren't ours. Additionally, when Detroit recently released their housing package, the real centerpiece of their package was that they were going to try to commit the city to be a partner, not 100%, but to be a partner in owning projects. Because when a municipality owns a project, what you will be told is, "Then we have an ability to put these kinds of requirements into the project that we cannot place on the private developers." And so, it's a bit different than what the Housing Advisory Committee suggested, but what we're suggesting is if you want to make requirements for affordable housing, then the city has to have at least some ownership interest in that property. So if you, if that's what you're suggesting, really what we're suggesting is the city should start to become at least a partner in future housing projects to require affordable housing.
And this would enable us to work with other partners.
Yep.
So like, I'm looking at Carlos in the back with the Housing Commission. I think that's gonna be a growing relationship that we have between the city and the Housing Commission, but potentially we could partner with them to assist.
Or any private partner.
Or any, any private partner, or nonprofit organization.
And Mayor, I should've made that earlier, actually, that it's not just about outright owning property. It's definitely about partnerships.
Okay.
Retaining some sort of a property interest.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Lanier, Commissioner Allen, did you have your hand up?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Lanier, then O'Connor.
So, two questions. Well, and I'll bundle them. So, what does this look like in practice? A home becomes for sale on my block, and the city goes and purchases that home and then fulfill this requirement? Or is it larger-scaled projects specifically that we're looking at? Or is it funneling the dollars through the CIZs so that the CIZs could make the acquisitions and then they can do the...
We didn't think of that.
Or the land bank?
Or the land bank, yeah.
Or the House of Mission?
So, help me to understand what it looks like in practice.
Commissioner, I think it could look like any of those things.
Okay. So, but we don't, we're just saying yes. We don't know what we're saying yes to yet.
This was...
We're suggesting you cannot say yes to making requirements on private developments.
Right.
The closest you can come is if we have an ownership interest to make requirements on that project specifically.
So, so, so right now, this option isn't available to us. So let's say hypothetically, a significant parcel becomes available, let's say on 28th Street or Plainfield, we've talked quite a bit about that. At this point, the city doesn't have a process where we would actively pursue purchasing that property and then being a partner in the redevelopment of that property. This would at least open the door, not that we will decide to use this as a tool, but as of right now, we don't have the tool to do that if that option came, became available, where this would enable us to do that. Is that right?
Legally, you could do that, but I think it's important, first step would be to get a policy in place and then some procedures. And a program for doing so. I think step one, though, is the policy.
In our practice, Mayor, we just do not have that practice.
So, so right now, we could, we could do what this policy is suggesting, but we're trying to put it in writing to say, "This is a commitment that we're trying to make." So, since we can do this legally now, do we have any examples of projects that we've done this on in history?
I think...
In the city's history?
I'm sorry, I think the closest example I can think of is partnerships with the land bank, probably, where we've maintained some sort of reversionary interest, and then they've agreed to do things, sell properties at affordable. Right? So, that's the best example I can think of at this point.
Jessica, with the, I mean, this was several years ago, with the example of the old DHHS building and Pleasant Park, how that was a transaction with us and the county and a private developer, and with some commitment about how we would redevelop that, that land, could that be an example?
Yes, definitely. And I think what you're starting to, this conversation is starting to sort of morph into the conversation that will soon be surrounding the voluntary equitable development agreements or VITAs as we've, I don't know if Greg ruled that out yet, but...
Any benefit? There's a number of language...
The idea where we enter into agreement with partners and then what we get out of it is these, you know, this affordable housing piece that we want so badly, so, yeah.
Okay. I think Commissioner O'Connor had a comment, and then Commissioner Kelly, and then I'll turn over to the side.
And I appreciate Greg brought up, this is quite different than what was recommended from the committee. And I'm still just trying to wrap my head around, and I appreciate the work you've done on this, and I understand why Jessica did the work she did and explaining, and we've talked a lot about this, but this just doesn't seem like it should be something, like how it would be implemented, how it would be administrated, how we would make those decisions, and necessarily even if it's the city's core business to be doing this. I mean, this is suddenly, the city has never done this before where it decides it's going to go purchase interest in a project with the explicit, explicit point of trying to control something that is out in the market. And that, to me, feels like a slippery slope in terms of, you know, let's say you buy a derelict department store on 28th Street and then it doesn't work, right? Then the taxpayer's on the hook for our mistake, and we're not professional real estate developers. We're not developers of affordable housing, and we have great partners in our community that do that. And so, I think it's important that we be a partner in those things when we can, but the city being the entity that goes and tries to make that decision is not, is not, not what we should be doing.
What was the recommendation, if you could, that, what was the original recommendation?
Affordable housing prerequisite was the title of the recommendation. The proposal summary says, "To develop policies or programs designed to bring about a supply of housing priced for a mix of incomes within Grand Rapids neighborhoods." So, again, this, I mean, this could, this could also be, I mean, look at this in a correlated, or in inverse fashion, let's just say we have a place like downtown where we have a high concentration of affordable housing development existing, and we say we want more, we need more market rate in this neighborhood because it's, it's been a concentration of affordable housing. Like, it's like, it's also, again, you could do it both ways. It's not saying that we only have to do, we only, but, but I think it, it's just, again, it's a slippery slope where the city's now trying to play developer and trying to time the market and figure out the market and coordinate the activities, and I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it.
And, you know, one, one other question, and maybe Commissioner Allen can pipe in on this as well. You know, it reminds me a little bit, but maybe it's, it's, this is more, being more aggressive than, and proactive versus reactive. It reminds me a little bit of our prior practice for foreclosed properties, where we would, we would, we would acquire them, and then we would partner with nonprofits to redevelop them. And we had a long history of doing that independently as a city before the land bank existed, and now we partner with them to do that, largely based on concerns of the county race at the time with our internal process. But with that, I mean, is, it's...
I think that would fit neatly within this policy that you're describing.
Well, and I think the example earlier this year where we, or two year last year, where we had our foreclosed property, we went through our vacant property, we transferred those to the land bank, they helped us clear title, we had requirements about how they are developed, like, that's something we already had possession of through a legal process. So that, that, I think that's different than the city being an active participant in trying to...
Bidding and...
Go find properties to do this in.
Yeah.
There's a clear differentiation between, this is something that we have possession of that we can...
Yeah. No, I hear your point. I think that's...
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly, and then Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I just think, I think that this is a policy, I hear what Commissioner O'Connor is saying, and I think that we have to be cautious with this, that this would be a limited tool, but in partnership with the Housing Commission, too, I think that we have some opportunities for that difficult piece of administration. And I'm thinking that this might be an option to at least move forward, particularly with mixed income. Now, that's where I think the Housing Advisory, Advisory Board that's coming up will have to take a close look at something like this and, and be very cautious in coming back to the commission and saying, "What about this? Would this work?" But if it gets us toward mixed income, and if we can have, for, already we have some properties in the downtown area, for example, and, and maybe we can be a limited partner that there's, we've offered that, if there's a bonus, that there, that section of it only is, is going to fall under this, and we, we partner with Housing Commission to track it over time. I think it's worth exploration. I just think, again, like you said, we have to be careful with this.
I think it's important to note that, I think, the, the Fund Committee, you know, this may be a perfect example where they can say, "Hey, we have X dollars available to us," and they're not city general fund dollars, they're dollars assigned to affordability, and they can make the determination that says, "Hey, we could, we know of this property, we could, we could spend this X line item from our budget on doing this." But to say that this should be something that's contained within the, you know, this building, in, in the confines of City Hall or in, in a department that would have to create a position to do, like, that seems just way outside the scope of...
Let me get to Commissioner Allen, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Lanier.
Well, I actually don't agree with you, Commissioner O'Connor, and I'll, I'll tell you why. I, you presumed that the city would always take the lead, and what I heard in this is that we would be a partner in. So as long as there's always where a partner in, then I don't have a problem with it. And I'll give you the perfect example, because the example's sitting in the room right now. So, the RDG group out of Chicago was selling their entire portfolio. It came across my desk, it came across several other people's desks. I immediately called Eric, talked to Eric about it and said, you know, "In our day and age, with what the affordability issue we're dealing with right now, the city can't just sit by and let over 100 properties change hands, knowing that it's potential that an outside, another outside investor could take them." So we convened a group, and I see Ryan Verweis from ICCF here, and several, the city was there, other nonprofits, and thankfully ICCF had the wherewithal to pull together the funds to actually acquire these properties. But I felt that the city could potentially use our leverage, maybe some bond financing or something, to, to help make this acquisition happen, where we're a partner in but not actually doing. And I think that, I know, once RDG announced that they did that, I know of three other investment groups that sold smaller portfolios, and they, they hit the market, actually, a big chunk of them in the second ward up in the, up in the Bellknap neighborhood, there was a property owner that owned 32 properties and sold the entire thing. So, if we are serious about affordability, then I think we need to leverage whatever, and it's all about leverage. So we do have the ability to leverage that, and I think what I hear, and I, the key word Commissioner Kelly used was "tool." This is just a tool that we can use, definitely needs to be some parameters about it, so it's not just out there buying everything we can buy, but I think it's, I think it's a tool that if structured right, we could really make a difference.
Okay, so Commissioner Lanier, and then Schaefer, and then Kelly.
I think Commissioner Allen just spoke to the point that I was thinking would be best, which is, the starting point shouldn't be with the city, because I, I agree with what you're suggesting, that it'll create too much work, but if we had any of our nonprofit developers to come to us to say, "Hey, this is a project I'm looking at, and this is the type of support or partnership from the city," I think that's different than being the initiator of purchasing and acquiring property. So, perhaps it could be worded differently. I think the other piece, too, is specifically talking about affordability, but I think the point that you made about, or maybe you made about, the diversity in housing options. So it's not always affordability is needed if, you know, if you're already in, in an area of town where the saturation of affordable housing is available. So in, in that case, it may need to be market rate. So I think, you know, it's just, I think this is a really good conversation because it brings us to the point of, okay, what does work? And what, if we can already do those things, and if we publicly talk about being open and available to those types of partnerships, it may not require policies. And then you let developers go and do their thing, and then come back with, with different plans, and then at the moment that those plans come before us, then we can make decisions about whether this is a partnership we want to enter into or not. Otherwise, I just think it's too subjective, like, you know, which properties do we choose? How do we make those decisions? And, yeah, and so forth.
Yeah. Or Commissioner, and maybe, I'll get to other comments, and then Jessica can weigh in. Maybe, maybe we have a policy that, that outlines the parameters? Because I don't think necessarily organizations see us as a potential partner in that way. And so having a, a clear policy that lays out those parameters, saying exactly what you just said, and maybe some other kind of limits of, of the practice, would let people know that that's an option. So we, I mean, that's, because I think you make a very good point. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, around that, that point, I think that when it's in our policy that we have to acquire, means that we also have some potential risk around that, and this is an area that we haven't done to that point before. I think, Mayor, to your point, I think we all did support with the process we have, properties that we do have now, how do we look, look to do that? But this, this does, for me, get a little bit into an area that we haven't done in the past, and gets a little bit off of what I think is ultimately the, the core and for the impact that it would have. I, I think where, where you find it is, can it not be done, but with the not-for-profit groups that we have, they're able to leverage other investment tools, can it not be done with entities like the land bank or like those that are already looking and kind of reviewing these things, and it's their core mission to do that? And then that's where I think it probably should come, with a, with a fully-vetted plan. And that's, that's maybe part of the policy. You could add, have it be a vetted plan, or what, whatever the, the procedure would be, and I think that's at least some concerns that I have, so.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I just think that this is, this kind of opens up for ourselves to some, I know some risks that we have to be careful about, but also some creativity from the market. Another example I thought about was when Habitat, GRCC, GRPS, and KSD, they all have their construction programs, something we desperately need here, and they came together and were able to get some land from the land bank, but there's a shortage in the city for them to build on, to build affordable housing. You know, they need, they need those properties, and here's another opportunity. And we have very small scale, but then they build on a piece of land that we might acquire that maybe is, is, nobody else is gonna pay for, or whatever, and we can, we have another opportunity. So I think we've, we've done some of these kinds of things in the past. It's more an opportunity to, to inspire some of that creativity, like you said, Commissioner Lanier.
And, no, I, I, this is really a good conversation. I'm not, I think, Commissioner Allen, we're not in disagreement. I think what, I think you triggered me to think about something that we talked a lot about, a lot about in this. Creating affordable housing with new is expensive, right? Like, that's, there's, there's this giant gath that exists, but keeping what we have that is now affordable or close to affordable is something that's important. And so I think it's really about how a policy is developed around this, to say, and I think you brought it up, Mayor, too, it's not, the, people don't know, or entities don't know that we could be this, a resource that could, could create a trigger that would say, "This has to remain in, to be affordable," because then, when the city holds an interest, it has a different legal requirement that keeps something in check. And so, yeah, I think it would, you know, using a developer that wants to sell 30 units, if they knew, if the, if the nonprofit partner who bought them used the city as the leverage mechanism to say, "Hey, we're willing to do this," right? We're, we're not interfering in the market, we're letting someone use the resources that we have to fulfill their mission. That is a different conversation than the city being an active participant in trying to purchase and negotiate development projects. So, again, careful policy development, I think, there's, there's some potential super positive outcome that can come from this, but it's how we flesh all that out, so.
Lanier, I think you, you read my mind, Commissioner, because I was thinking, especially as it gets around preservation of affordable housing, which is another really significant piece of this puzzle, right? It's not just building new, but really preserving affordable housing. So Commissioners, maybe I can, I can recommend that we move forward with setting a public hearing, that we think about if we wanted to implement a policy like this, what would those parameters be to enable the, the community and our partners to see us as a partner, but also to put limits on, on how we would utilize a potential tool? And, and then it would give us time to hear back from the community, and, and I know we have some partners in the audience today, or with us today, I should say, and, and maybe they have some ideas that we haven't thought about, so this would allow us to get feedback, and do, set a public hearing, and consider it in the future. Commissioner Allen?
I would like to echo what Commissioner Schaefer said, I think maybe a key word here is to maybe change the language from "purchase" to "participate in," so it's a little less onerous on the city, I think that's an important caveat, maybe, to me.
Yeah, that's a good point. City Manager?
Just would like to urge you to remember, this is a tool, and we have all kinds of, we need all kinds of tools, and I understand that a tool like a hammer can be very destructive, but if you don't have one of those when you need it, then you're missing. And so this is a tool, and I think that, I suppose, where if we're out trying to buy properties, which we never contemplated in writing this, that might send us off the wrong direction. We would agree, but the notion of having a small interest in a project that's already coming together in the nonprofit or private world, and they need our assistance, and we contribute land, or whatever it is we contribute, and now we have a say in that partnership, and remember this, at our tables, we have been talking about, how do we, long-term buying projects that say, "I'm affordable," to being affordable for more than a year?
Right.
This is a way to do that.
All right, so final comment from Commissioner Allen, and then...
Something City Manager mentioned spurred something in my mind. Another concern that I have going forward, as I look to the future, is for-profit developers that have done low-income housing tax credit projects, and maintaining their, their affordability past the 15-year, I mean, technically, they're supposed to keep them affordable for 30 years, but there's no compliance after 15 years? And how many of those do we have in the city that are, you know, and what, what role should the city play? We already have one that went down, Einhorn Group or something, I think it was, got a lot of press, so that's something I think the city really needs to watch carefully.
Yeah. So Commissioners, can I make a recommendation that we go ahead and schedule a public hearing about this?
I mean, the motion that's on the table is to approve this.
Oh, to approve a resolution.
So if somebody could just amend it to, to set a public hearing, then, yeah, I didn't intend, I didn't know where this was going, so I did not put a public hearing in there, so, sorry.
So Commissioners, can I ask one of you to make that amendment?
So moved.
Ford?
All right, so this would set a public hearing also for January 9.
Okay.
And then that will give us time to kind of flush out some of our thoughts, and maybe some parameters that we would be comfortable with, but also hear back from the community.
Will it also include, sorry, will it also include changing the language from purchasing to partnerships?
Uncomfortable with that, as everyone else?
Yes, because I think with the public hearing, the, the public needs to know what they're weighing in on, and if we're already comfortable with saying, "This is about partners, partnering as opposed to acquiring," I think we should share that in advance.
So Jessica, could you make some amendments based on the conversations that you heard around this table? That integrates some of the concerns, but also some of the language changes?
Definitely, I tried to take notes, so what I'll do is, I'll make an amended version, I'll send it out to you for review, and if you could just sign your comments back, and then it'll be in place before the public hearing.
Great. Does that sound good, everyone? All right, so I'll call the question on the amendment to add a public hearing for January 9. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, take care.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so our next item is a resolution approving amendments to City Commission Policy 900-35, and this is the Home Buyer Assistance Fund, and this was Housing Advisory Committee Recommendation Number Two.
Support.
All right, thank you. It's on the floor, Connie Bohatch, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, so you've had an opportunity to talk a little bit about this previously, actually a number of times now, in regard to the actual recommendations that were brought forward, and then in the City Manager's presentation on November 14 regarding the housing now. And this is a program that we've had in place, the policy's actually, was adopted in 1996, but we issued our first loan in July of 97, so the program's been in, in operation for quite some time, and really hasn't had too many policy changes. We use, have used home dollars to support down payment assistance through this program, and so we have followed all the federal rules related to that primarily. So today, what we brought in front of you is a resolution that, if you chose to today, that would actually adopt suggested amendments to the program in relation to some of the concepts or targets that the Advisory Committee was interested in. And that, you know, focusing on increasing homeownership rates, and creating more housing choice, increasing personal wealth over time, and reducing the number of vacant homes, hoping that vacant homes are, that are in neighborhoods would actually be sold. So, very high level, so there was some, a little bit of language cleanup here or there that was very insignificant to the policy, but the highlights are that we changed the purpose statement, because before, it really just reflected that we're providing financial assistance to an individual who's low mod income, and this was to change it in terms of what the goal is, to increase opportunities, I'm sorry, homeownership opportunities, provide housing choice. It would also allow for a home to be purchased anywhere in the city, because currently, it's only allowed in our general target area, which is a smaller geography in our city. And when the policy was first established, that was sort of the purpose of trying to ensure that there was investment in a neighborhood, and also having to deal with issues of high rental, as opposed to homeownership rates in certain neighborhoods. So that targeted approach would be taken away, in terms of providing more choice of where you purchase a home, and where you choose to live. We also wanted just to, in the policy, affirm that someone that lives in the unit, it might be a rent, a home that, it could be a single-family home that someone's renting, that they are eligible to buy the home through this program. And clarification on, previously, we talked about a first-time home buyer, but really what we meant by that was someone who had not owned a home within the last three years. So wanted to just get that language out of there. We looked at the amount for the down payment assistance, currently it's $5,000. We talked to all of the participating lenders that are involved in the program, and some of our development partners who actually use this program for persons that are buying their homes. And so we would like to increase that to 7,500 from 5,000. And also, what we're finding is that the income, the household asset ceiling of 5,000 is very restrictive, and being able to increase that to 10,000 so that you can have personal assets that are a little bit higher, because that's very low in terms of sort of making you ineligible for the program. And then what we did is really tried to look at throughout the policy, where we could get rid of specific statements that are specific to certain federal programs, so that we can have more flexibility in terms of if there's other funding sources available. And in fact, we'd like to use CDBG dollars as opposed to our home dollars moving forward with the program. And so there'd be some nuances there that we would work on when we do the, the actual processing of the information with the client.
All right, thank you, Connie. I'll start with Commissioner Allen.
This time, I'll go first.
Okay.
A question, and a question and a comment. Connie, is it a federal requirement, or is it a requirement that we do have an asset limit?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just raising that, but we do have to have an asset limit?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I have a little bit of a concern on that asset issue, I brought it up in other, other instances, that I, I think there are circumstances where folks could have what is classified as an asset, say they, you know, inherited something from a family member, like stocks, you know, so those kind of things, yet they still meet all the low-income qualifications, that then they would be limited from this, so. But if there is a need for this, I'll live with it for right now. My comment is, this is a policy that I really like, because having been involved in this field for many, many years, in the field of affordable housing, it's been my criticism of the program that due to the strategic area in the general target area, we've actually concentrated poverty. So if you get government-supported rental development, or government-supported homeownership, it has to be in this neighborhood, and I, and it should be citywide. So I, I really encourage approval of this, this is a well-thought-out piece, I think it offers more doors of opportunity, this is, this is a policy, and I think upping it to 7,500 is also a smart move. It ups, the, with the, with the property values going up, it allows a person to buy more house. So if you have to put 3% down, 7,500 allows you to buy a lot more house than the 5,000. So this is a policy that I really like.
Yeah. Well, well said, Commissioner, I think you read the minds of all of us around this table, and echoed what we've talked about in, in the past, about having the removal, or I should say, at least removing that target area language. Let's go Commissioner O'Connor, then Lanier, then Kelly.
First, I want to say thanks to Connie and her team for putting all the hard work on this. This was, I think, probably one of the most widely supported and universally supported policies we talked about, and it's exciting to see it come forward here. And just to begin, the focus on homeownership is something that we, except for, I think gets lost in the conversation about affordable housing, that your house is often your, is the biggest asset you'll ever own, and owning a house in, in these United States means that, that's, that's your way to, to build wealth and to, to do this. So having the city access, access to more money to do this is just, you know, one of the best things I think we can do.
Yeah, agreed. Commissioner?
So, thank you, Connie, for this presentation and the information, and to your staff for doing this work. I have a question about the unintended consequences. So this all sounds really, really good, and we're all really, really for it, but I'm wondering what does, what's the negative side that I may not know, because I'm not doing this work daily? What's the negative side of spreading those dollars across the city? Does it change, so going back to your point, Commissioner Allen, that what it potentially could have been doing is concentrate, concentrating poverty? So is the unintended consequence that homes in specific neighborhoods will then become market rate and less affordable, if they're already affordable now?
I can't answer that, but what I can say is that I think that when this policy was put into place originally, it had a different intention, right? Yes, to create homeownership, but it was also to create homeownership opportunities for persons who couldn't get some, or who, who wanted to stay likely in their neighborhoods, and provide an opportunity also for sustainable investment in a neighborhood that may have been, you know, at risk or struggling at that time. So I think this is just a change in terms of where we're at now, and this provides people to go wherever they'd like to purchase a home. So now, we aren't going to be saying, "Because you're low-income, and you would like to purchase a home, you can only live in these neighborhoods," right? It provides the opportunity for the choice of where you live. So I think that's a good thing. I can't talk about what impact, long-term impact it may or may not have on the housing market itself. This program in particular, you're required to live in your home for five years, and not, I mean, to not sell the home for five years, and then it's, so basically, it's a grant that's, you know, it's forgiven, your loan is forgiven. If you move in that time period, then there's a formula for how you pay that back, it's by month that you've lived in the home. So there's some debate about should people have to live in their, own the home longer period or not, to make sure that that home stays in ownership of, of someone who got the assistance? You know, that's, that's up for your discussion, but traditionally, we have had it at five years.
So who would know the answer to that question? Like, who, City Manager? Who's doing this now that maybe we can go and find out what happened after they made the switch?
I, I think, Commissioner, if we're looking for a significant downside, it's probably not there, and the reason being is, if this program grows to be as robust as we could possibly afford, we're still talking a very, very small sliver of the housing stock in the city being affected, you know, less than 1%, so I don't think it would really have an effect on the marketplace at all. In our current program, I forgot what Connie told me, 20 people a year or something, it was, it was a small number, and so I don't think this is really going to change the marketplace.
Because the quantity isn't large enough to make a difference.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Mayor, perhaps this is getting too much into the weeds, but I've, one, one thought that I had, as I was reviewing this, is this could potentially be used as a, I think, a very strategic tool for families who are currently being adversely affected by the lead issue in 49507, as a means of walking alongside them to help them find both affordable and, most importantly, more healthier housing. And again, use it in a very aggressive manner to reach out to those folks, to find out, you know, because perhaps there, there may be families who are feeling helpless, and feeling as if their options are limited, but if they have available to them resources that could help them get out of their current circumstance, and it's something better, it might be a way to kind of jumpstart this. And thank you to you, I thank you also, Connie, for your, your work, and the, the department's work on this as well.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Schaefer, then Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, I'd also would, would echo that. I think, overall, when you look at, what's that gap and barrier to kind of get you, get you in, to have that amount be high enough to make it work, to have a go from lender perspective for closing costs as well, which can be significant when you're starting up a transaction? You know, along those lines, I think it's important, we have a Section 5 there that talks about a memorandum of understanding that the lender would enter into. So likelihood, if you need down, down payment assistance, you also need a loan, so I would, I would just offer that, let's, let's work, or maybe put a committee together, I'm happy to serve on that, too, so that we get as much marketing out to the lender committee and to the Realtor group, because those are the intake for a lot of that first-time home buyer that we won't see, because they, you know, they won't traditionally intake to the city, and we probably couldn't market enough to get them to, to come here, so I think that that's, that that's ultimately key, and would, would like to see us have to fund it to a level that does make an impact, because I think it does help drive that ability for people to get into that first-time home, which creates a lot of stability.
So we currently have 11 participating lenders. There were many more, but recently, I don't know if you've noticed, that there's been a lot of bank merging that's gone on. So we're continuously doing outreach to lenders to see if they're interested in participating in the program. So if we get calls about someone interested in owning a home, we, we refer them to the information of who our participating lenders are, so that they can reach out. But, but you're right, the, the clients come to us from their lender, so they have to have a mortgage, and it'd be in that process, and a comment about lead. So every home that is intended to be purchased, our housing rehabilitation staff actually do a visual paints, interior paint inspection to determine if there's any peeling paint or potential lead hazard. If they actually see something that is suspected, then they're required to actually go through and have the risk assessment conducted, and if there is lead, then there has to be a determination of whether the home, if the homeowner will then have to address it, in order to, for the home buyer to actually get our assistance. If they choose not to, then we're not going to provide the down payment assistance, but that owner has to now disclose that in the future for their selling.
And Connie, could they access support through our lead abatement program, and partner with Healthy Homes on that?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
A couple of final comments. Perhaps, just a suggestion to Connie and the Community Development Committee, perhaps might have to think about upping the amount we allocate for this fund, just since we've upped the down payment amount, so just a thought there. Second, I see Carlos in the audience. Carlos, does Section 8 still have a program where Section 8 homeowners can apply to actually purchase homes?
Yep.
I think that's an area where we might look towards marketing. And I, this may, may already be in place, so I'll just lay that out there, but assuming this passes, I think this would be a really important program for the County Community Development Department to consider, because housing is a regional issue, and there's a lot of affordable housing in Kentwood and Wyoming as well, where a down payment assistance program like this would be very effective.
We'll let Connie share that with the county.
I will do that, Commissioner, thank you.
And, you know, other, other partners, too. A lot of the nonprofit organizations work with families for homeownership as well, and I think they could assist.
And we might want to mention that our, a couple of our nonprofit housing developers are actually the housing counselors for the program. We have a requirement for the education component of this before the purchase of your home, and ICCF and New Development Corp., for example, provide that education.
Great. Commissioner Lanier, then Kelly, and then I'll call the question.
So, actually, that leads me to the point, or the question that I was going to make. We have a number of nonprofit organizations that we provide funding to, to provide counseling services to people who may be losing homes, or getting evicted, and something along those lines. I can remember us through CD approving some of those partnerships, so I'm wondering if they, too, going back to Commissioner Schaefer's point, if they, too, could be advertisers for this program as they're having conversations with people who are having some housing issues or concerns? Perhaps this would be another option, is to make sure that they have the material so that they can share that information, too. So that was one point, but I also, Mayor, I had, and, and this is kind of off-topic, but since I have the floor, I'll just quickly mention this. I had that we were going to talk about propose, the item number five today... I had that we were going to talk about proposed, the item number five today, but we talked about seven, and I don't know if I just wrote that down incorrectly last week?
Which, will you remind us what five is?
Five says, propose policy to encourage voluntary development agreements for affordable housing.
That, I think, is going to.
Economic development.
So I just, okay, so then it was seven, because I had that as, okay, Greg is saying something else.
In the very first version that went out, there was an error, and I had swapped mistakenly five and seven. So you were right, you were looking at our early version. But number five will be discussed next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Kelly, and then I will call the question on this.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that as we're raising the amount to 7,500, we're reflecting what's going on with inflation, and I would assume that our advisory board will constantly keep an eye on that, because this policy could be adjusted depending on the market and what's going on. Also, just a comment on Commissioner Schaefer's suggestion about a lending committee, I would, I know of a situation where someone went after one of the down payment assistance, and the banker was not, just didn't follow through. And so I would recommend someone who is very used to this, and she's been involved with the Fair Housing Committee, Dorit Ardone, a Realtor here, I would suggest if you're going to have a group that looks at it, to include her, because she's had a lot of experience in this area. And then finally, a question for you, Connie. How soon if we approve this? I think, you know, we're all on board with this, can we move forward with this? What's left in the pot now? And as we move forward, how soon can we get this going?
Before Connie answers, maybe a point of clarification, that this recommendation assumed it would be funded from the Housing Advisory Fund.
Right.
Or Affordable Housing Fund, not from the current resources, because the City Commission Committee recommended that back when you made your recommendations for CDBG homes. So I don't know that we're ready to start today. We still have some work to do with the Housing Commission established the fund. I think we also want to gear up with marketing. So it would be soon, but I think we're a few months off.
A few months.
I think, just a point of clarification, so in the Neighborhood Infrastructure Program Fund that we have that's reserved for a variety of purposes, there's been conversation in front of that we would be looking to support the issues with tree planting in our STAs for all the trees that are planned to be removed. So we have a few projects that have been identified for those resources, and what we're proposing to do is actually move a portion of those funds as well, which is CDBG and an eligible activity, to this program, because currently, today, we don't have any money. We've already spent the allocation that was approved that started July 1. And so those resources, then, we don't have to worry about taking anything from the Affordable Housing Fund, it stays contained into the programs that we currently operate. So that's what we're planning to do at this point.
What's the amount?
We'd like to do, have at least enough for 25, which would be, if it's up to the cap of 7,500, gets you to 187,500, I think. Thank you.
And what's the timeline on that, then? Do we need to do any action?
No, it's a non-substantial plan amendment for an activity that already exists in your plan and everything that's been approved with HUD.
Very good, then we can get going.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, I'll call the question then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, nice work. And then last, that will take us to item number 16. We're running a few minutes behind for our presentation, so we'll try to move this along. This is a resolution postponing the proposed adoption of items related to pedestrian safety and accessibility. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, so Josh Niermore, you want to tell us about this? Commissioners, we're asking for this to be postponed based on concerns that we've heard and questions we have that we really would like resolved, but I'll turn over to Josh.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So just as the resolution kind of says, is that staff is requesting some additional time to refine the proposed ordinance and policy changes related to pedestrian safety and accessibility. We received a lot of really support for the majority of the recommendations, although I will point out that mostly after the public comment period of November 28th, there were some concerns related to on-street parking and bus stops, so wanting some additional time to refine that, as well as break the elements in the package to bring forward in the new year, just in order to make sure that we can prioritize them, to bring them back to impact for any of the ones that would impact for construction season.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so Commissioners, I think all of us heard concerns about this, and we want to make sure that we don't have a negative impact, especially on our neighborhood business districts. So any questions or comments about this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you, Josh. All right, next, Commissioners, that will take us to a presentation from our Parks and Recreation Department. We're going to get an update on how millage dollars have been spent so far, as well as an update on the Parks Master Plan.
One meeting, start another.
Oh, I have to close that meeting. So our committee of the whole meeting is adjourned.